Site or the app, please use the chat box to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question. So that we can minimize the amount of people talking over one another. Melissa will be monitoring the chat box today. So before we dive in, are there any questions about those ground rules? Okay, well Beverly, I'll throw it to you for the Open Public Meetings Act compliance and then the roll call of the board.
Hey, this is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, The Record, the Asbury Park Press, the New Jersey Herald News, and the Courier-News. It was posted in the Estes County Hall of Records in Newark. Hey.
Uh, roll call?
Bergen.
Peter Botsolos present.
Essex.
David Antonio present.
Hudson.
Byron Nicholas present.
Hunterdon.
Sue Salloway present.
Jersey City.
Mike Manzella non-voting present.
Middlesex.
Charlie Kenny, uh, present.
Monmouth.
Terry O'Connor present.
Morris.
John Hayes, Morris County.
Newark. Ocean. Hosaic.
I'm here.
Somerset.
Walt Wayne present.
Sussex. Union.
Betty Chan Kowalski, Union County.
Warren.
Jason Sernowski, Warren.
Governor's Office.
Dorian Smith, Governor's Office.
NJ DOT.
Andy Swords present.
Uh, that would be Andy, non-voting.
Um, I'm filling in for Mike Russo, the voting member. I believe I'm voting number.
Okay, NJ Transit.
Morning, Jeremy Colangelo, representing President, CEO Kevin Corporate present.
Port Authority.
B. Shellfield, Port Authority of New York and New Jersey here.
Citizens Representative.
Jared Rodriguez present.
Hey. We have seventeen voting members present and quorum.
All right. Thank you very much, Beverly. Welcome, everyone. Uh, we're gonna move right on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two board meeting? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved chairman by Union County.
Thank you, BJ. And do we have a second?
Monmouth will second.
Thank you very much. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Uh, and finally, any abstentions? Just give, uh, give us a shout out if you need to abstain. Okay.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Um, so we've got a little addition to our usual agenda, and that is right now at this time, we're gonna consider the recommendation of the Executive Committee regarding the hiring of a new executive director. As this discussion concerns personnel matters, I'm calling for the board to go into closed session. Uh, what's gonna happen now is I'm gonna call for a motion for that. Um, and then, uh, once that motion passes, board members should mute your line, turn off your camera, and dial in to the separate conference call number that Beverly provided via email last Wednesday at two thirty-four P M. So I say that upfront, so you got the next minute or so to post a question in the chat. Uh, find that email and open it up so that you know how to join us when we go into closed session. We're not gonna do that here. We're not gonna exit this meeting. We're just gonna dial into something separate after, um, muting, uh, uh, muting and, uh, turning off our cameras here. So with that, may I have a motion to, uh, approve the resolution to enter into a closed session?
Hunterdon.
Hunterdon moves. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Somerset seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. Beverly, would you please call the roll on this motion?
Beverly, you're on mute.
Bergen.
Yes.
Essex.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hunterdon.
Yes.
Jersey City. Middlesex.
Yes.
Monmouth.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes, Kathy DeFilippo.
Newark. Ocean.
Yes.
Hosaic.
Yes.
Somerset.
Yes.
Sussex. Union.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Governor's Office.
Yes.
NJ DOT.
Yes.
NJ Transit.
Yes.
Port Authority.
Yes.
Citizens Representative.
Yes.
Okay, the resolution is approved, but before we proceed, uh, Melissa, do I understand correctly that the board members will be asked to leave the Zoom meeting uh, before logging in for the teleconference and then coming back after?
Yeah, Commissioner Bartlett, whatever you prefer, but we had told people to log out just so they didn't accidentally unmute the Zoom or anything like that.
Gonna unmute my software. Um, that's fine. Uh, if the more secure thing is to log out and log back in, that's no problem. Um,
Either one, yeah, either one works.
Yeah, does everybody, um, or let me rephrase that. If there are any board members who haven't found that dial-in number that Beverly circulated last Wednesday, November ninth at two thirty-four P M via email, um, speak now because once we all disappear, it'll be a little harder. Uh, for, for folks who are watching and won't be part of it, just so you understand, um, uh, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act provides for boards like this to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters. Uh, that's what we're doing here. It's just gonna be the board members and council. Uh, it shouldn't be long, uh, but of course it's subject to the conversation that happens there. And when, once we come back, the meeting, meeting will, uh, proceed as per normal. So, um, I don't see anybody chiming in in the chat, so I'm gonna leave the meeting. Uh, encourage my fellow board members to do the same, and we'll talk to you in just a minute on that dial-in number.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the dial-in number.
I can forward it to you, Andy. I'll send it right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Uh, same, same thing here, Melissa. I need the number as well.
Oh, okay. I'll send that right now. Beverly resetted this morning. I'm sorry about that, guys.
Oh, I didn't see the reset this morning. I just had the old one open. Anyway, hopefully we'll, we'll hear most of your voices in a minute or so.
Okay.
I just emailed it, Andy and David Anthony.
Melissa, should I leave too?
The executive session has ended and the members of the board are making their way back into the Zoom. Let's give them a minute to do so. And then we will entertain a motion to exit the executive session. Can I have a motion from someone on the board to exit executive session?
Susan Soloway, Hunterdon County, I'll make that motion.
Okay, great. Can I have a second?
Second, Somerset County.
Very good. Beverly, would you call the roll on a motion to exit the executive session?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris? Morris? Newark?
Present, not voting.
Ocean?
Guidebook relates to highway science that's
Heseyck?
Present.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Thank you very much, Beverly, and thanks to everyone for waiting while the board had our conversation in closed session. That brings us to item number two under letter D, which is approval of a resolution authorizing negotiation and execution of an employment contract for executive director between David W. Barron and NJTPA. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second, Union County.
Any comments? Any comments from the board members? Any comments from members of the public on this item? Okay, Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Heseyck?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And David, on behalf of the entire board, I want to congratulate you and thank you for your work as acting executive director over these past four months. I want to talk briefly now in open session about the hiring process before I say more about our new executive director. The board worked closely with human resources at NJIT and widely advertised this position. We received nine applications and ultimately decided to interview four finalists. One of those withdrew prior to the interview. Commissioners Kelly, Kenny Kowalski, and I interviewed three candidates at NJTPA's offices in early October. We deliberated and conferred with Commissioner Sarnoski, the fifth member of our executive committee, and ultimately recommended David for the job. David's experience leading the agency's extraordinary staff and collaborating with our many partners will provide important continuity as we look to seize all the opportunities available under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IIJA, and other initiatives. I'm confident, David, that you and the NJTPA staff will continue to work well with the board, the subregions, and our partner agencies, and we look forward to working with you in the months and years still to come.
Thank you. If I could just take a moment, be very quick. Thank you all very much. You know, thank you Chairman Bartlett, members of the executive committee, the entire board for putting your trust in me to lead the NJTPA staff on a permanent basis going forward. I'm very, very excited about this opportunity. It's very gratifying to have the support of the board and staff here as I move into this role. I'd like to thank all the previous NJTPA board chairs and board members and executive directors who I worked with over the years. They gave me opportunities to grow in the organization, to help the NJTPA grow and evolve over the years. Most importantly, I would like to thank the NJTPA's great staff, past and present, who I've come to know and respect over my many years here. Some of you I've worked with for more than two decades. For others, it's a lot closer to two months. But we're all doing great work. And believe me, you are all an asset to the board and to the region. I'm sure that great work's going to continue. So I look forward to continuing growth and development of the agency in the months and years to come, making us more effective and a better place for us to work and a better servant to the region. So with that, I'll just say thank you very much again, and we can get back to today's meeting. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, David. Congratulations again, and thank you especially to my fellow executive committee members for your hard work on the search process over these last couple of months. I'm now going to take the opportunity to present my report. Before we get to the rest of today's action items and our speaker, I want to provide an overview of the onsite portion of USDOT, the U.S. Department of Transportation's federal certification review of the NJTPA earlier this month. I was very pleased to participate in a panel discussion on the NJTPA's planning process with members of the board and representatives of ARTAC and the Transportation Management Associations. I'd like to thank Commissioners DeFilippo, Kelly, Kowalski, and Sarnoski for joining the discussion to talk to the federal agencies about the important role that NJTPA plays in the region and in our subregions. We also told the review team about NJTPA's committee and board structure and how it allows us to get involved in the planning process, particularly in developing the long-range plans that guide transportation investments. We highlighted the bipartisan nature of the board and how we all work together regardless of political affiliation to improve transportation for our entire region. I also want to thank ARTAC Vice Chair Byron Nicholas and Jeremy Colangelo Bryan of NJ Transit for participating in the discussion. They provide an important insight into the role the subregions and agencies play in the planning process. Thank you also to Tara Shepherd, Executive Director of Go Hunterdon, President of the TMA Council of New Jersey, who spoke about how the Transportation Management Associations work with the NJTPA to assist travelers throughout the state. While we all provided different perspectives, there was a common theme among all of our comments that the NJTPA staff does a great job working with all of us and its many partners in the region and the state. And I'd like to thank the entire NJTPA staff for all those efforts and for everything that they did to get rid, to get ready for the federal review. We won't receive the final report until April, but our federal partners indicated they plan to give us several recommendations, including for our safety, freight, and performance-based planning work, our complete streets technical assistance program, the creation of a data viewer to support state strategic highway safety plan implementation, and our innovative public engagement. The review team said it will also be making some recommendations, most of which will focus on continuing our great work and strengthening existing initiatives. I have one more announcement I'd like to make before turning to the agenda. Two projects have been selected for the 2023 Together North Jersey Vibrant Places Technical Assistance Program. The NJTPA funds this program, which is being conducted in partnership with the Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers and the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. The city of Lambertville in Hunterdon County will be developing an augmented reality walking tour that will depict the historic and potential future impacts of climate change and flooding events in the community. This will include photographic renderings, videos, and other multimedia components to raise awareness about how residents can get involved in resiliency planning. The other project is being led by the Muskanet Kong Watershed Association, which will develop a strategic vision for the strategic vision plan for the village of Asbury in Warren County. The goal of the plan is to create a pedestrian-oriented atmosphere that attracts visitors and businesses while leveraging the watershed's many historic, cultural, and natural assets. Moving to the agenda, I'd like to thank our speaker, Richard Sun, Governor Murphy's Transportation Policy Advisor and Lead on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or IIJA. Richard will be leading a discussion with us about our region's needs and how IIJA can benefit New Jersey. For instance, we've already seen our formula funding for bridge replacements and repairs increase thanks to IIJA, and we're expecting to receive more than $100 million over five years to expand the state's electric vehicle charging network. This funding directly supports the goals we detailed in Plan 2050, to keep our transportation infrastructure in a state of good repair and to implement technology like electric vehicle charging that will help improve air quality and the environment. On the topic of infrastructure investments, board will be voting today on additional $418.5 million to our transportation improvement program for the Portal North Bridge. While procedurally this action, item is called a minor amendment, there's of course nothing minor about this project and the amount of money that the Federal Transit Administration has awarded NJ Transit for this vital regional and national project. As we've also often discussed at NJTPA, the Portal North Bridge is a critical span over the Hackensack River that carries hundreds of NJ Transit and Amtrak trains into and out of New York each day. The current swing bridge often gets stuck halting rail traffic and delaying commuters and visitors. The new bridge will be a fixed span with a higher clearance to allow ships to pass below it. It will also allow NJ Transit to operate longer and higher capacity trains. Before I close, I just wanted to remind everyone to let NJTPA staff know if you're planning to apply for any IIJA-related grants. Staff can help you by providing letters of support. Staff can help you by providing letters of support, access to data, and other assistance. Staff continues to post updates about funding opportunities Finally, I want to mention to all of our board members and alternates. You either have received or are about to receive from Melissa an email with a poll asking about your preferences for meeting virtually versus versus in person going forward. We're at a different phase of the COVID-19 pandemic than we've been since March of 2020, when under Kathy's leadership, this whole shop went into lockdown and we began meeting virtually for all of our committee meetings and all of our board meetings. The poll poses to you the question of how would you like us to meet beginning in January of 2023 and looking forward through 2023 and beyond? We've learned a lot about meeting virtually. Certainly for a lot of us, it has convenience advantages. But there's also something that's missed when we don't meet in person. So the poll poses to you a variety of options in terms of what you prefer with respect to how we do board meetings and committee meetings going forward. I really want to hear from all of you because we're going to make a decision and implement that decision in 2023 in consultation with the board and executive committee and with staff. And your input is very, very important. So please take a minute between when you get that, that survey link in your email between now and I think it's Thanksgiving or the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we're going to keep that poll open. So take a couple minutes. It's three questions. You know, you can type in your answers or click the radio buttons. Give us your feedback and let us know what you think about what these meetings should look like heading into future years. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and thank you very much. Any remarks from NJDOT this morning?
No, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
How about from NJ Transit?
Good morning. No comments today, but certainly look forward to hearing Richard's presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So David, would you please present your executive director's report to the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, I know that Richard is in a bit of a time crunch, and I'm wondering if we could just switch, and I'll give my report on staff activities after Richard's done speaking. Is that all right?
Absolutely. Let us, let me do a quick intro for Richard. Richard Sun serves as Governor Murphy's Senior Policy Advisor on Transportation and the IIJA Coordinator for the State of New Jersey. He's here not just to talk at us, but to lead a discussion of the board. Richard's portfolio spans innovative micro-mobility projects such as Trenton Moves and large-scale infrastructure projects like Gateway. As IIJA Coordinator, Richard is responsible for maximizing New Jersey's return on the generational opportunity that the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act presents. This includes maximizing federal funding, workforce development, and intergovernmental coordination at the federal, state, and local level. Prior to state government, Richard served as City Councilman in Summit, New Jersey, received his bachelor's degree from Columbia University, and his Juris Doctorate from a little place up in Cambridge, Massachusetts called Harvard Law School. And he also serves as an officer in the United States Navy Reserve. Please welcome Richard Sun.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman and Dave. Congratulations. I hate to be one more from you doing your first official ED report, but here's a congratulations and good to see some familiar faces, Jeremy, Andy, BJ Kowalski, who I've known since I was in Summit, Chairman, you of course, and then Ricky Matea. So lots of familiar faces. Really, as the chairman said, today is meant to be a discussion. I do have to jump at around 11:30 just to speak to my counterparts in the Northeast. We are trying to figure out some of the same questions that we'll have a discussion here. So hopefully you'll arm me with some good points to discuss with Rhode Island and Delaware and the like. But, but as you all know, the IIJA coming up on its one-year birthday tomorrow is, is a standard surface highway transportation reauthorization. It's about a 20% plus up on the 5.5 billion that New Jersey would receive in the normal course for roads and highways, and then about a billion dollars extra in, in the bridge formula program. As Jeremy, Jeremy and I have also worked pretty closely in Gateway, and so there's some specific, there's a $36 billion allocation along the Northeast Quarter, which will flow through FRA rather than through Amtrak. And members of the Northeast Quarter, including Kevin Corbett, who's the co-chair of NEC, can access those funds in a separate pot. What I really want to focus today is on, on that formula funding, that 5.5 billion in the incremental 20%, as well as discretionary grant programs and essentially Chairman nailed it on the head, like how can we work better as, as a region to capture the dollars that are made available? And not just capture the dollars, but also make sure those dollars go as far as possible. So on the, on the, on the formula side, you, as you, as you all know, that the way that federal dollars flow through the state is through, through the STIP. The STIP in turn comes from the tip, which is the three MPOs jointly create the tip. So what I really wanted to do is before, before I speak at you, I just really want to say thank you because NJTPA did a phenomenal job over the past year through board actions, whether it be through updating how you update the STIP to the actual projects themselves to sort of the behind-the-scenes procedure. And obviously, a board is only successful because of the staff, or you know, it takes both a board and a staff for an organization to be successful. So I would just say the added flexibility that you provided on the tip enables the state to also then capture opportunities a little bit better. We will also talk a little bit about the discretionary grant opportunities. One thing we've noticed is first, New Jersey has done well. We were punching above our weight. We won a Raze Grant for the City of Elizabeth for $5 million for ferries. The Rapp Kearney Infra Grant for $26 million for $103 million project, as well as New Jersey Transit's bus and bus facility grant. You know, one thing we've noticed in all these applications is that projects with a clear equity and sustainability dimension tend to do better. And so that's something that we're, we find extremely compelling. The one thing, so, so I, on the discretionary side, one thing I'd like to encourage all of you to do is, is one, to continue to apply for programs, right? If you don't ask, you don't get fed. And specifically apply to projects that have an equity and sustainability lens. And, and I would argue that every project has an equity and sustainability lens, and what the key is both to to seek that out in projects, but then also to amplify that dimension of projects as you're applying, because I think it will increase the competitiveness of such projects. And then, you know, both the state and NJTPA, I don't mean to speak for, for, for all of you, but, but I, what I do know is that the state stands ready to write letters of support, and I know that NJTPA's letters of support have been hugely valuable to us as a state when we applied for the NEVI formula funding. You know, it was really helpful to have your, your letter of support. We did, we did get approval for our plan to deploy the $104 million. And so all this to say is that these great tasks, you know, victory has a thousand parents and defeat is an orphan. So for us to really capture this opportunity, we're all going to have to work very closely together, and we have, and it's been amazing. The last piece I'll touch on is the private sector component, which is the private sector. There's a long ramp to a lot of these projects in terms of it's a five-year spending authority that will ultimately, you know, take over eight to 10 years to ultimately deploy. And so it may be that the workforce of today is not designed to, to increase, to work with 20% more funding capacity, right? Because if you have the same pipe and you try to put more water down, the pipe will burst. So one thing
Richard, I think we just lost your sound.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. One way to grow the pipeline is, is essentially forecasting the demand in terms of what can the labor expect in terms of additional work, the job categories? And then, you know, three-year, four-year training pipelines in three years, even though IIJA will expire this round. You know, as I opened up the call, it's a surface reauthorization. And so it's very unlikely, it may not go increase at the same rate as it did in the past, but it probably won't go down. And so that means it gives certainty to the market that it can, they can grow their workforce and so that they'll be ready to capture this opportunity. So with that, I'll pause and, you know, take any questions from this group, and any feedback would also be extremely valuable. I'll, I'll ask the question, which is what, what can we as a state be doing better to, to help serve NJTPA in its mission for the, for North Jersey?
I'm going to encourage senior staff, David, and anybody else who's on, also to chime into that question because you're really the ones doing the day-to-day work. Richard, I think you know, we're certainly getting the information about the opportunities timely, and we're getting those out on our IIJA webpage on NJTPA.org. Does staff want to add? And of course, board members, but
Richard, thanks for asking that question. You know, I would, I would say that first and foremost, the most important thing is that we just have ongoing communication and coordination, and that's been excellent so far. You know, a few months ago, you were able to come here to the office and meet with us. And, you know, to get to know each other, and that's helpful. And I know you provide some, some of the regular updates about what's going on related to IIJA. And I would just say that it will do the same when, when you're aware of a, an initiative municipality, one of our counties, or one of the agencies that may be pushing forward, particularly in the, in the competitive grant area. You know, let's just confirm with each other. Make sure we're all on the same page. We're all supportive. I mean, that what we've seen so far out of our subregions and out of our municipalities and the agencies, the things we've been asked to support have all been really good projects, really solid, very consistent with our plan. So I, I think from, from our perspective, so long as we can keep talking, make sure we're all aware of all the different moving pieces. That's helpful, and I would just reiterate something that the chairman said earlier to our subregions. If you are applying or, or, you know, very strongly considering applying, coordinate with us, reach out to, to your contacts at the NJTPA. You can reach out to me or others. And if you know of a municipality that's in, in your county that's, that's applying, pull us into that loop, because sometimes the municipalities don't have the same level of awareness of who we are and what we do. Something we're looking to improve upon, which I'll talk about in a minute or two. So that, that would be my sort of, my, my first take on that question, Richard.
That's awesome. And I guess, if I may, would it be helpful if municipalities come to the state? You know, trying to get projects on this, on the STIP that I ask them to first consult with you all because the tip is an input to the STIP. Is that, would that be appropriate for?
I mean, I think any, any project that people are, you know, seriously considering and, and, and pushing for in our region, we should, we should know about. Exactly how it goes after that, depending on the exact nature of the project or what programs. And, you know, that we work with DOT and Transit to to try to take care of that. But sure, just the more information and the more awareness we have, the better.
That sounds great. I guess the classic answer is it depends, but definitely awareness is key. So well, Chairman David, thank you both so much. Oh, executive director, I should say, thank you so much for having me. I do need to jump to talk to my Northeast colleagues. But if, whatever I learned from that conversation, I'll also be sure to share with you all. So thank you all for having me today. It's an honor and a privilege to present to you, and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much, Richard. Appreciate it. All right. So shall we jump back, David, to your executive director's report?
Sure thing. Just double checking. You can all still hear me, right? Okay. Well, again, thank you very much for the, the vote of a few minutes ago. I appreciate that. I'm not speak at length about that anymore, but I do know that it's, it's, I'm very very appreciative, very honored, and very excited about this. So and now I'm happy to report on recent staff activities and the continued progress of our work here at the NJTPA. Of course, as the chairman mentioned, one major focus for staff recently was preparing for the federal certification review. I'll second the chair's comment that I believe this went very well. A lot of things that we received are were noted that we will receive commendations on, or I say when a recommendation is continue what you're doing. That's, that's almost the same as a commend, as a commendation, if not the same. But it was a really good opportunity for us to sort of take stock of our achievements over the past four years since the last cert review. Certainly, we've come, you know, we had some unprecedented challenges in the last couple of years. But really, I think what, what was kind of amazing is that was almost, that was a certain part of the discussion, talking about how we we had to deal with the pandemic and go fully remote and how we didn't skip a beat and we got all our work products done. But really, the main thing was is we didn't have to talk about that that much because we did keep doing all of our work during that period. As the chairman said, thank you to all who participated. Folks who, who provided statements of support, stakeholders who we work with. It was, it was just very heartening to hear that our work is valued and that we're having a positive impact on the region. And again, as was, was mentioned, we anticipate getting a final report in the spring that will have any recommendations of actions we should take going forward and things we need to address. At the review, we really, you know, we naturally focused on how we're meeting our core federal mandates, such as developing and implementing the long-range plan and the tip, conducting air quality conformity, using performance measures to guide our work. We also highlighted our annual unified planning work program. As you know, that guides the work of our central staff, the subregions, and the Transportation Management Associations. I should note that the latest update for fiscal year 2024, which begins next July, is under development. We welcome your input on the work program priorities. We'll be reaching out again. We'll be discussing this with you further in the weeks and months to come before we look for a March approval of that work program at the board. Oh, I should note that in the, in the package for today's meeting, we included correspondence about the planning priorities of NJDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, which helped guide the work program. At our last committee meetings, we did not have those yet, so they weren't available to share with you, so we're providing them now. And you'll hear more about the, the UPWP development in the Planning and Economic Development Committee Report. We also, a few other things that we highlighted, which I would say where we're putting federal dollars to work to meet critical local needs, which is something I've always stressed over the years as one of the main purposes of this organization. That, that would be our Street Smart Pedestrian Safety Campaign, regional planning coordination, like the Morris Canal Working Group, our freight planning work, our local test, technical assistance programs, and our public engagement. One thing we highlighted in particular was our Active Transportation Plan, which is currently under development. We had a recent survey and some outreach events around the region for this. Active transportation is non-motorized, human-powered transportation, mainly walking and biking. In the coming year, we'll be finalizing that plan. And very briefly on that, we do have a quick video that Chairman Bartlet participated in. We'd just like to show that very quickly.
The NJTPA is working on an active transportation plan for northern and central New Jersey. What's active transportation? Think of human-powered ways to get around, like walking, riding a bike, or using a non-motorized scooter or skateboard. This region-wide effort will advance goals of the NJTPA's Long Range Transportation Plan by helping to establish a safer, more accessible, equitable, and better functioning network for active transportation, one that efficiently connects people with where they need to go.
The safety of our most vulnerable travelers, pedestrians and bicyclists, is always a priority. But even more so during the pandemic, when we saw more people walking and biking, especially in low-income communities where fewer people own cars and transportation options are limited. This plan will help identify and prioritize projects that make active transportation safer and more reliable throughout our region.
Active Transportation Plan will help identify critical gaps in the bicycle and pedestrian network, including where new or improved sidewalks, bike lanes, crosswalks, trails, and other facilities are needed. It'll help improve the active transportation experience by identifying areas with greater challenges for walking and biking, such as high-speed traffic or higher crash rates, conducting surveys, and using interactive maps to pinpoint barriers, missing links, and other trouble spots for walking and biking, offering guidance for getting active transportation improvements funded and built, and encouraging active transportation by promoting the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking. For details about the NJTPA's Regional Active Transportation Plan and how you can provide input, check out NJTPA.org/activetransportation.
All right. David, if you're going to credit me for being in that video, I'll have to credit Melissa for being the bicyclist riding away behind me.
And of course, the, the voice of Ted Ritter as well. And a few other, a few other NJTPA staffers pop up in some of the photos, too. Thanks to everybody who, who helped put that together. I think that the Active Transportation Plan is really notable because we're, we're trying to develop a recommended regional network of trails and bike lanes based on where people travel and where they want to travel. And I think this is going to mesh well with other NJTPA efforts. and where they want to travel. And I think this is going to mesh well with other NJTPA efforts to bolster municipal planning and local travel options. You know, the Vibrant Places Award that Chairman Bartlett, uh, mentioned also fall into this category of municipal support as do our Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program and Planning for Emerging Centers Program. I should note, we are also partnering with the New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association on a transit hub planning program that is accepting applications through December 15th. You can find more about that on our website. Two studies will be chosen for that and, uh, for the coming year. Uh, as an example, a past project was identification of economic development strategies around the Donegal and train station. That effort included a lot of community outreach and, uh, the municipality was able to really do some good planning on how to get more benefit out of their train station. Again, that's on our website, uh, information about applying. So what we hope is that those programs, which are small, we hope to grow them, but, uh, even so, the, the, the work that comes out of it serves as examples that can be applied in other places, even if they're not part of that program. A quick example, walkable community workshop just finished up in Seaside Heights Borough in Ocean County through the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program. And six other communities with similar projects in that program will be, will be wrapping up their work in the not too distant future. Want to note that we're going to be highlighting in particular these municipally focused programs and related opportunities tomorrow through Thursday at the League of Municipalities Conference. If you are attending, look for our booth. It's the first time I believe that we've had a booth in at least my time at the NJTPA. We're, we're looking forward to that. Uh, regarding some other events, on October 28th, I participated on a panel on equity at Intelligent Transportation Society of New Jersey's annual meeting. In addition, I'd like just to let you know, if you didn't see it on our website, that ITS New Jersey inducted our former executive director, Mary Ameen into their Hall of Fame for her contributions to transportation technology development and mobility. And through her work at the NJTPA and in previous positions, certainly well deserved. I was very glad to be able to be there on hand to see it, see it in person and to see Mary. Before closing, I'll note that tomorrow, there's a meeting of the Multi-State Freight Working Group, which is a Subcommittee of the Metropolitan Area Planning or MAP Forum, which is made up of representatives of 10 MPOs from New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut. The group will be discussing workforce accessibility issues in the freight and logistics field. Meeting information is available on our website. Check the calendar. Also, the full map, full map forum is meeting virtually December 2nd. Details on that will be posted shortly. And then my last note, uh, later this week, you'll be, you'll be receiving a link to our latest issue of In Transition Magazine, which we've converted to an online publication. And it features articles on key planning issues in our region and around the nation. So, uh, we're glad to have In Transition back up and running and we hope that you, uh, benefit from, from checking that out. And with that, I will conclude my report so we can get back to the action items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, David. Great report. And again, kudos to staff on their work on, uh, the federal review. That brings us to our committee reports. And I'm now going to call on Commissioner John Kelly to give the project prioritization committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I give that report, let me just add my congratulations to Dave on his appointment as the Executive Director of NJTPA. Look forward to working with you in the years to come.
Thank you.
With that, I am pleased to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee, which considered five action items at the Joint Committee Meeting in September, four of which are on today's agenda. These actions reflect the infusion of additional federal funding made possible by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. The first is a minor amendment to the Current Transportation Improvement Program or TIP that is requested by New Jersey Transit. As the chairman mentioned, this action will add $418.5 million in federal funding to the Port-au-Prince Bridge, a project of true regional and national significance. This will be listed as action item one. Next, the committee considered minor amendments to the current tip to add two projects using federal funds from the NJTPA Future Projects Program line. First, Morris County is requesting the addition of the East Main Street Bridge over Rockaway River Project with $10.25 million for preliminary engineering, design, right of way and construction phases of work from fiscal years 2023 to 2028. Second, Hudson County is requesting the addition of the Meadowlands Parkway Project with $40.2 million for preliminary engineering, design, right of way and construction phases of work from fiscal years 2023 to 2029. Both projects recently completed local concept development studies as part of the NJTPA's Local Capital Project Delivery Program. This is listed as action item two. The next item considered by the committee is a minor amendment to the current tip to add the Ferry Slip Reconstruction Project at the CRRNJ Terminal State Historic Site at Liberty State Park in Jersey City. The project received a federal grant award of $5.9 million. Additional funding will be provided by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This project is requested by NJDOT, whose Office of Maritime Resources will serve as project sponsor. It is listed as action item three. Action item four is a minor amendment to the current tip to add $400,000 in federal funds to the Route 29 Bridge over Copper Creek Project in Huntington County, as requested by NJDOT. These funds will cover the preliminary engineering phase of work in fiscal year 2023. Also at the meeting, the committee considered a set of modifications to the current tip to add $137.92 million to three statewide programs as requested by New Jersey Transit. The three projects are as follows: rail rolling stock procurement, preventive maintenance rail and preventive maintenance bus. The committee approved the modifications and no further action is required. Also at the meeting, staff briefed the committee on the development of the fiscal year 2024 to 2027 tip and a revision of the NJTPA Environmental Justice and Title VI Equity Population Factors for Project Prioritization. This includes considering the region's foreign born population along with low income and minority projects as part of criteria used to assessing equity in prioritizing projects. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so as Commissioner Kelly told us, the first action item concerns a minor amendment to the fiscal year 2022 through 2025 tip to add federal funding to the Port-au-Prince Bridge as requested by NJ Transit. For those of you following along in the agenda packet, that's attachments G1A and G1B. In the interest of simplifying our board action for this online meeting, we've asked some board members to be prepared to offer a motion and a second. I understand New Jersey Transit would like to move this item.
Uh, yes, correct. New Jersey Transit moves.
Thank you, Chairman. And Port Authority, will you second?
Yes, second by the Port Authority.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members? Any comments from members of the public on this item? Just a reminder, if you want to comment, uh, chime in in the chat box or if you are.
I'm on Zoom. I've got a vote, so I'm trying to, okay, go ahead.
Just, uh, just unmute yourself. Okay. Hearing none. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Next is a minor amendment to the 2022 through 2025 tip to add federal funds to two local projects. The East Main Street Bridge over Rockaway River, as requested by Morris County, and the Meadowlands Parkway Bridge, as requested by Hudson County. These are attachments G2A and B in your agenda packet. I understand Morris County would like to move this item?
Move it. Kathy Di Filippo.
Thank you, Kathy. And Hudson, will you second?
Yes, Hudson seconds.
Right. Any comments from the board on this item? Any comments from members of the public? All right. Beverly, Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay. Next, we have a minor amendment to the tip for 2022 through 25 to add the Ferry Slip Reconstruction, the CRRNJ Terminal State Historic Site Phase 1, as requested by the Department of Transportation's Office of Maritime Resources, attachments G3A and B in your agenda packet. I understand NJDOT would like to move this item?
Sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Monmouth, will you second?
And Monmouth will second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from members of the board? Any comments from members of the public on this item?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay. Uh, Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Finally, we have a minor amendment to the 2022 through 2025 tip to add federal funds to the Route 29 Bridge over Copper Creek in Hunterdon County, as requested by NJDOT. I understand, uh, New Jersey Department of Transportation would like to move this item.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Hunterdon County, will you second?
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from members of the board? Any comments from members of the public on this item?
That's him.
All right. Beverly, would you call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Is hosting their psychiatric hospital.
Okay. Middlesex?
Uh, perfect timing. Take care. Hospital and Middlesex. Um, yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we will hear from Commissioner Charles Kenny, who will give the Planning and Economic Development Committee Report. Commissioner?
Good morning. Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, and also David, on behalf of Middlesex County, congratulations to you and wish you the best of luck. So tonight, today's report is Mobility Management Center. Oh, that's page two. Let me go to page one. Thank you. And I'm pleased to report on the activities of Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the October meeting, we heard a presentation by Peter Jen, Associate Professor at Rutgers Center for Advanced Infrastructure and Transportation, or CAT. Professor Jen said the Smart Mobility Testing Ground Project undertaken by Rutgers is establishing a living laboratory for smart mobility and smart city technology research and development downtown New Brunswick. Professor Jen said the testing ground team, which includes Middlesex County and other public and private partners, aims to make transportation systems safer and more efficient. To do this, it is looking at how to make roadside infrastructure smarter by using technology developed for connect and automated vehicles. This involve, this involves roadside sensing and computing infrastructure that would allow anyone connected to the system with an app to get a full image of traffic and pedestrian activity at a testing site, whether they are in a vehicle or not. Currently, there are six live testing sites. The study team is looking to deploy eight more. Middlesex County working with Rutgers to establish Data City, a smart mobility management center in New Brunswick. Data City will monitor roadside data from living test sites and serve as a technology breeding ground for the state and the county. Also at the joint meeting, staff provided an update on the development of the fiscal year 2024 Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, to document outlines the planning work to be accomplished by central staff, the subregions and transportation management associations for the fiscal year beginning next July. A draft will be distributed on December 2nd with a presentation at the Joint Committee Meeting on December 12th. The draft UPWP is then slated for a vote at the February round of committee meetings and for final adoption by the full board in March. Board members, subregional staffs and agency partners are urged to review and provide input on the UPWP throughout the development process. Uh, I just would also like to, before I conclude, Mr. Chairman, acknowledge, uh, Solomon Kavanis, our Director of Transportation in Middlesex County, who is working, uh, with the crew in Middlesex, uh, to develop Data City and, and work to provide those, uh, living test sites. And I want to acknowledge the hard work that they're putting in. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, and great work to Solomon that, uh, the work of our staff at the county and subregion level is really crucial to, uh, everything that we do along with our NJTPA staff. So that brings us to the Freight Initiatives Committee, and I'll call on Commissioner Jason Sernoski to give the.
Thank you, Chairman. Just give me one second so I can get this up here. Good, good, uh, morning, almost afternoon. Uh, pleased to report on the Freight Initiatives Committee uh, on the October meeting where we heard from two speakers who discussed issues surrounding warehousing and local land use. Our first speaker was Donna Rendero, Executive Director of the State of Office of Planning Advocacy. She said, "Planning and zoning boards around the state have been inundated in recent years with applications to build giant warehouses and distribution and fulfillment centers. That has led the state to issue recent guidance to help municipalities determine how or whether to allow warehouses. The state's guidelines encourage a proactive rather than reactive approach, providing municipalities with factors to consider when updating their master plans and ordinances. The guidelines also support a regional approach to sitting warehouses." Next, we heard from Wilda Diaz, former mayor of Perth Amboy in Middlesex County. Ms. Diaz said, "The creation of Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency in 1997, an adoption of a redevelopment plan helped the city address a legacy of contamination at several former industrial brownfield sites." One of the projects to come out of that plan is a Home Depot Distribution Center. The project invested 500 million for new construction and more than 10 million to remediate 92 acres of contaminated land, opening a logistics center that created more than 500 jobs. In negotiations, the city was able to acquire open land and had a developer construct an amphitheater, as well as major road repairs, infrastructure improvements, and other enhancements. Overall, more than 500 acres of contaminated sites in Perth Amboy have been remediated. This has attracted and generated nearly $1 billion in new construction projects, nearly $15 million in tax ratables, and more than 3,000 jobs for residents. During then, the meeting, NJTPA freight staff provided an update on studies that are underway, including the Freight Rail Grade Crossing Assessment and freight concept development projects in Somerset and Mars County. Among the member reports at the meeting, NJDOT said that requests for grants under the Rail Freight Assistance Program are under review, and the application period for grants under the Local Freight Impact Fund has opened. The Port Authority reported that as of August, the port has been designated the nation's number-one port by volume, mostly due to a shift in incoming sailings to the East Coast rather than the West. New Jersey Transit reported that they continue to develop the state rail plan with NJDOT and expect to issue a draft early next year. That concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate that. So that brings us to the public participation section of the meeting. I'll call on people in the order that they signed up. If you didn't sign up, please request to comment or ask questions in the chat box, or wait until we call for comments from those of you on your phones. Also, please remember to mute yourselves when you're not speaking. Just as a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments, and the time will be displayed on the screen while each person is speaking. Also, a reminder that this is being broadcast and that your comments become part of the public record. Melissa, have any members of the public signed up in advance to speak at today's meeting?
Yes, we had two people sign up in advance. The first one was Neil Weisman.
Okay. Neil, let's hear it.
Okay. If you can hear me. Yes. Good. Sharon Bartlett, Director Baron, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have posted a link to extended remarks in the chat, and this will be with respect to the Active Transportation Plan. I will highlight two measures to encourage the growth of cycling. The first item takes the form of a letter from a dozen cycling organizations to the New Jersey and the New York governors supporting the Palisade Interstate Park Commission's request for $3.5 million to resurface the Henry Hudson Drive. For those unaware, the drive is an eight-mile public road cresting the Palisades between Edgewater and Alpine. It connects to 9W and via the GWB to the Hudson Greenway in Manhattan. The drive is a naturally occurring linear park and a preeminent destination for the region cyclists. It has been so for decades. However, it is frequently damaged by rock slides, and whole sections were ruined during Hurricane Ida. Given the hundreds of millions of dollars being spent on new bikeways, allocating $3.5 million to restore the drive to a state of good repair should be a no-brainer. The second item would be a comprehensive review of state legislation governing bike use at intersections and on delineated shoulders. A key provision that puts cyclists at risk is a questionable decision by the New Jersey Supreme Court in Polzo versus the County of Essex, directing cyclists to ride as far to the right on the roadway as possible, yet prohibits them from riding on the road shoulder, something most road users expect cyclists to do. Further, the court's decision induces traffic engineers to neglect cyclist safety on new construction and maintenance projects. One example is the two miles of Route 9W between Englewood Cliffs and Tenafly. Despite heavy bike use, at times exceeding that of cars, the shoulder is never more than a foot wide. And a heat map of North Jersey indicates a vast network of roads not designated as bikeways, yet experiencing significant bike traffic. Any set of recommendations adopted by this agency should address the flawed Polzo decision by designating all safe and usable shoulders under its jurisdiction as de facto bike lanes, a move Polzo allows, which is consistent with motorists' expectations. Also, to require newly constructed or resurfaced shoulders meeting accepted engineering standards to be explicitly designated as bike lanes. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Neil, thank you very much for that detailed and thoughtful presentation. Melissa, who's next?
The only other speaker we had sign up in advance is Andy Weist.
Okay. Andy, you're up.
Good morning, board. NJ Transit bus and light rail service in Hudson County is terrible. I needed to take the NJ Transit 88 bus yesterday to Journal Square, and it only runs every 40 minutes, 40 minutes in crowded Hudson County. The bus runs so slow on Kennedy Boulevard because Bus Rapid Transit was never implemented, and I got off at the Bergen Line Hudson-Bergen Light Rail Station. The light rail trains were running every 20 minutes, which is unacceptable. The bus and light rail frequency in crowded Hudson County are completely unacceptable. How can people without a car exist like this in Hudson County? Weekend NJ Transit service frequency is much worse than the terrible weekday service frequency. NJ Transit also cut midday and evening bus service in Hudson County during the weekdays. The situation in Hudson County is alarming and cruel. We need more NJ Transit bus and light rail service frequency. We need Bus Rapid Transit on Kennedy Boulevard because a bus would travel 10 miles per hour. As you know, the NJTPA recommended Bus Rapid Transit in Kennedy Boulevard several years ago in a study. It was never implemented. Where is the urgency to improve NJ Transit conditions? Where are the bus lanes? Where is the NJ Transit Customer Advocate Office? We've been waiting for years. The NJ Transit Reform Law passed several years ago, and the customer advocate is still missing. NJ Transit bus and light rail commuters are ignored because it is a class status issue. It's a class status issue. Our leaders think NJ Transit bus and light rail riders are inferior people, and we are ignored because of our class status in society. Another topic is dangerous Kennedy Boulevard in Hudson County. This is another class status issue. Where are the leading pedestrian interval setups on traffic lights? I went to the Kennedy Boulevard Safety Study at the Hudson County Community College several years ago, and NJTPA staff agreed that leading pedestrian interval saves lives and is needed on Kennedy Boulevard. It was never done, and Kennedy Boulevard is incredibly dangerous for pedestrians. People have to run across Kennedy Boulevard, even crosswires. Where are the bollards that protect pedestrians in Kennedy Boulevard? It looks like the Hudson County Engineers installed bollards where people get killed on Kennedy Boulevard. Two people got killed near Union City High School, and they installed a few bollards. A person got killed at 30th and Kennedy Boulevard, and they installed a few bollards. The rest of the county of Kennedy Boulevard has no bollards, and pedestrians are very vulnerable. The beg buttons for pedestrians across Kennedy Boulevard are old and broken. You know, we need leading pedestrian interval to get a head start across the street with all cars stopped. Here is my recap. NJTPA recommended leading pedestrian interval on Kennedy Boulevard. It was never done. NJTPA recommended Bus Rapid Transit at Kennedy Boulevard. It was never done. NJTP understands that Kennedy Boulevard is dangerous and was never done. Why are the NJTPA recommendations constantly ignored by NJ Transit in Hudson County? Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate those comments and a good question. Melissa, has anybody else signed up in the chat box?
Nobody in the chat. I don't know if there's anyone on the phone that wants to participate. I think that Commissioner Kelly might be the only caller, actually, so.
Okay. Well, we'll give, let's give folks on the phone about 10 seconds to unmute and chime in if you want to say anything. Otherwise, we'll move on. All right. Hearing no one. That brings us to the conclusion of this long meeting of ours. Time and place of the next meeting, the next NJTPA Board Meeting, will be on Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 10:30 in the morning. So in the meantime, happy holidays and safe travels for everyone who is traveling and enjoying the holidays. And we will see you on the first, well, the second Monday of 2023. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Union County.
Second, Middlesex.
All right. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of the month and the year.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all again. Have a great day.